Good evening. I want to go ahead and call our meeting to order. This is Monday, April 21st, 2025. This is a special meeting for personnel. If you would, please stand with me for the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, first thing on our agenda is 2.1 delegations to be heard, and I don't believe we have any
We haven't had.
signed up to speak. And with that, we'll go to 3.1 Personnel hearings requested by employees subject to proposed action of transfer and/or reduction in force.
Go ahead.
I'll go ahead. The first one is Ms. Jennifer McCommiss. Mrs. McCommiss, did you want a public or private hearing? You didn't specify. Okay.
Just to, so everybody's clear on how we'll proceed with this, we'll start with the opening statement from the administration, an opening statement from the employee or their representative, and then if there are any, if there's any witnesses, we can call witnesses, starting with the administration, and we'll have the opportunity to question. And then the employee or their representative can call any witnesses. And then we will have closing statements at the end, and the board will deliberate at the end of all the personnel hearings.
Yes, yes, sir.
So.
We have Ms. Jennifer McCommiss. She's a counselor at Nichols Elementary School, placed on the transfer list this evening. And I'll have Mr.
Okay. All right. Ms. McCommiss, would you like to start by saying?
Sure. Well, good evening. Thank you all for having me. So first of all, I would like to say that I love this job, and of course, I would love to keep it. Maybe I should see this position. One of the greatest blessings, I believe, is to have a career that is a calling and a ministry, and I've been blessed to have two of those. I'm a recovering kindergarten teacher, and both of those have allowed me to work for Campbell County Schools for over 30 years. But even more than this, as I said, I would love to keep my position. I absolutely love it. But even more than this, I'm here to speak for maintaining these positions as a full-time position. I'm aware that this is not a decision that you have made lightly. I don't feel like anyone, I don't feel under attack. I don't feel like anybody's out to get us. But I still feel compelled to speak about the importance of keeping a counselor in each of these schools, particularly elementary, because that's what I know. As you know, the mental health needs of students continue to grow at a steady and fast rate. More and more children are losing parents to the opioid crisis through death or being removed from the home, and this impact is profound, particularly on early childhood. We have many children being raised by grandparents, and this brings about a distinct set of challenges as grandparents try to navigate this rapidly changing world, the technology, new math, all of those things. And, you know, there's a, I've talked to several grandparents, there's a really difficult thing of being robbed of being a parent or a grandparent, and now you're a parent, and the effect on raising children is very difficult as a result of that. Then there's the impact of social media, which is creating so many more issues. There's a deep, deep lack of connection among children and adults as more and more time is spent on devices, which creates less time for deep connection, which is so important for children, particularly during the early years. And it creates many issues for the classroom as well. Students are more likely to have struggles with relationships, and screen time seriously interferes with the development of an attention span and an ability to focus. It takes more than just the weekly guidance lessons that we present in the classroom to give children and families the tools to navigate these things. In my small elementary school, I have had to help young children deal with abuse of various kinds and families. There have been a surprising number of children who have thoughts of self-harm and have even considered suicide, and these are young children. And oftentimes, these issues would be overlooked if the child didn't feel safe enough and feel a connection with the counselor so that they would feel safe to share. And we have so many children who are struggling with anxiety and depression, and it's very common for parents to reach out to me for guidance on how to help their children deal with these mental health struggles. And again, many of these reach out because they know me, and they feel comfortable approaching me because they see me on the regular. Many of our kids have already given up. The hopelessness takes way more than can be provided, I'm so sorry, can be provided with weekly guidance lessons. There are so many children and adults who struggle with dysregulation. Self-regulation cannot simply be taught. It has to be practiced regularly, over and over again. A dysregulated child doesn't only interfere with his own learning, but the learning of the other students in the classroom. There's also an increased potential for behaviors that may be harmful for that child or for the classmates if the child cannot control their reactions. And I don't want to forget the toll that this takes on already overworked classroom teachers. And it's unlikely that a classroom will have only one child who has yet to learn to self-regulate. Anxiety, fear, anger, loss, guilt, and shame absolutely make it difficult for any of us to learn. It makes it difficult for us to problem-solve, create, trust, build relationships, or even care about doing any of those things. And without those things, academics are definitely going to suffer. Again, a dysregulated child cannot learn. That's not their priority. These are all things that require the skills we have been providing in our schools as counselors. In the last few years, we've been able to build a relationship with students because they see us regularly. I know myself, I am in the hallway every morning so the kids can see me and talk with me. I'm also in the cafeteria with 4th and 5th graders at lunch, so the kids really come to know me and trust me, as I'm sure they have with my colleagues. Fortunately, or unfortunately, my office is right across from the big kids' bathroom. This means that I get a lot of drop-ins. Children open up to me because they truly feel they know me and are comfortable doing so. If we are not visible in the schools, it will have an impact on whether we are seen as approachable. Dropping, sorry, dropping in for a day or two will greatly decrease this visibility and make it harder to build relationship. I stay busy in my little school, and I am there every day. I know I make a difference in my school. I know all these counselors do, and I know you do, you know that too. And as it is right now, there is still more that needs to be done. The teachers at my school have told me over and over again how much difference it has made to have a full-time counselor. As their load continues to increase, they will also need to figure out how to guide students through the things that we counselors have been handling. It's an unreasonable expectation, but they will give all they have got because that's what they do. They love children, and that is their ministry. I don't have a solution for our predicament. There's a reason I'm not sitting in one of those chairs. But I really hope you will consider these things. And if this is not to be this year, I beg you to keep in mind for the following years that this is a need. This is not just a good investment. I feel it's crucial. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Do you have questions, Ms. McCommiss?
Not for Ms. McCommiss at this time.
Okay. Any questions for?
Mr. Hardesty.
Mr. Hardesty.
Mr. Hardesty, will you please state your name for the record?
Timothy Hardesty.
And what's your position?
Superintendent.
Can you please explain to the board why you're recommending to Ms. Jennifer McCommiss be on transfer this evening?
Absolutely. And Ms. McCommiss, first of all, I want you to know that this has nothing personal. I'm glad you understand that. We know each other for over two decades. And this actually goes out, my overview board members would be to everyone here, and everyone has, all of our employees that are impacted. This is a very difficult time on our district because we're a family, and it's hard. But I do need to explain the purpose and the reason what you're being presented with today as an overview that applies to everyone. And then I'll get into the Ms. McCommiss's role specifically. But since 2014-15 school year, we have lost enrollment every year. As of the second month this current year, 24-25, from that peak, we're down 2,043 students. Current reimbursement's a little bit over $8,000 per year per kid. That means we've lost the revenue for next year from that peak of over $16 million. Unfortunately, loss of revenue is only one aspect. The other is that we currently have more employees now than we had at the peak when we had over 2,000 more kids. We have 118 more, to be precise. That's as of the second month report. Since then, we have added a few due to specific needs of students. The comps from the state funds for us next year, 1,430 positions, meaning the revenue that we receive from the state aid formula expects us to be able to operate the school district with 1,430 employees. We currently have over 1,700. What I'm presenting this evening as recommended changes for next year is not a reflection on Ms. McCommiss, any employee that's here or listed in that form, their work, their value, the value of what they do, or anything personal. I am tasked to work towards presenting a budget that will be sustainable towards the future, and where we currently are is just not sustainable. These changes alone do not even get us to where we are sustainable, but it is a first step. If we continue to lose enrollment, as it seems the trend is currently, that's just going to continue to compound the problem as we move forward. As for Jennifer McCommiss specifically, I think the world of her, and I've known her since I started in Campbell County Schools. Back in the day, she was a teacher at Spring Hill Elementary. I started on October 5th a long time ago. Since then, I think she went to Peyton Explore Academy, and I think this might be her sixth year now as a counselor. A few years ago, and it might have been that year that she started, we added counselors to our district due to a change in the school funding code. Unfortunately, we have lost some enrollment, which causes the state aid formula, it just doesn't cover all of the employees that we have. West Virginia Code 1898-8 allows for five professional support positions for every 1,000 students. That's what we're funded with as we come forward. We'll be, so with 11,000 students, or just a tad over, that gives us 55 positions that were part of that state aid formula. We currently have 16 RNs, 40 counselors, and 10 social workers. The plan presented moves back to a model prior to the 2018 school year, when our smaller elementary schools shared a counselor between two schools. Interestingly enough, this session actually passed House Bill 3209. The summary of that bill, which is what it's known as, is provide at least one counselor for every 250 students in public and public charter schools in the state. However, what they did in that bill, and the only place they addressed the numbers, it did pass, by the way, it says, "Beginning August 1st, 2025, each county shall employ two counselors to each 1,000 students in net enrollment, provided that this requirement may not be construed to increase the number of eligible professional student support personnel positions to each 1,000 students." So the five for every 1,000 still remains. And it referred to that. It goes on to say, "The counties may follow the ratio of one counselor every 400 to 450 students in elementary and middle school, and one counselor every 250 to 300 in high school." With Nichols enrollment of 237 students in the building, we can combine two schools and still stay within the 400 to 450 students. Everything she said is accurate. They're very valuable employees. And I did not make any of the decisions while I accept full responsibility for everything that you're presented tonight. I did not make any of those decisions in isolation. And so, Ms. McCommiss, you are placed on transfer, at least that's the recommendation. I, it's not personal at all against anyone here or anyone on that list, but that's just what I presented to the board. It's a difficult decision you all have to make tonight, because the five counselors, the six counselors that would be in jeopardy total, because there's 12 elementaries that have a counselor that may be able to combine, the total cost on those six positions that would be lost is $510,946. So it's just a little over half a million dollars. And unfortunately, while everything that she does and our counselors do and all of our employees do is extremely important to our students, the state only gives us so much money to operate on. Fortunately, our voters in Campbell County has helped us with an excess levy, but even that, there's a limit to what we get there as well.
Just one more question, Mr. Hardesty. I know we had added social workers and nurses as well as counselors. Can you explain to the board where we had the funding for that? Where we received the funding to do that?
Well, it's within the same funding, the funding formula. However, there are a couple of social workers that may be hired through grant funding or title funding. Pardon me?
COVID money.
Oh, well, okay, yes. So I didn't talk about COVID funds. The COVID money that we received added more employees because it was supposed to address the learning loss over the COVID years. I believe Campbell County and Mr. Ogden is here, if I'm misquoting this, but we were close to $70 million of federal money that we received during that time period. The majority of that went towards employees, whether that be hiring new people, after-school tutoring jobs, extracurricular jobs, busing, transportation, those type things. And so, that money is now expired, so we can't fall back on that any longer. So, but we just find ourselves with, I'm trying to find a way, path forward to where we can still make sure we're providing the needs to our students with the resources that we have.
And that ties into my last question. We are not, our elementary students will have a counselor at some point. They're not just being completely eliminated. Is that correct?
That's correct. It would go back to where they're sharing no more than two schools. Back in the day, there were counselors that had three schools or maybe even four. It would not be a model of that. And to be honest with you, if something happens that we could not stay within the 400 to 450 per counselor, then we may have to bring a couple of them back anyway. So it would just depend on the numbers of the students.
That's all I have for Mr. Hardesty. I did have a few for Ms.
Oh, thank you.
She won. I have just four questions for you, and it's, "Did evidence presented by the administration show sufficient and non-frevolous reason for the recommended personnel action, taking into account the discretion to act reasonably and acting in the best interest of the schools, but not arbitrarily or capriciously?"
I must not have heard that. Is that a question?
Yes, sorry. "Did the evidence presented by the administration show a sufficient and non-frevolous reason for the recommended personnel action?"
Yes.
Okay. "Were you given the opportunity to respond to the administration's recommendations, offering reasons why the action should not be taken?"
Yes.
"Were you given the opportunity to ask relevant questions of the administration and receive answers from the administration?"
Yes.
"Would you receive the appropriate notice and hearing, and were procedures followed by the appropriate statutes?"
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Thank you.
Ready to move on to the next?
The next one is Ms. Tracy McClanahan. She's a career literature teacher at Barbersville Middle School. She is represented this evening by Mr. Brandon Tenney of AFT. Again, we have Ms. Tracy McClanahan. I believe you requested a public hearing, is that correct? And you are a career lit teacher at Barbersville Middle School, and you're placed, recommended for transfer this evening.
Correct.
Yes, career literacy.
Did you have an opening?
I do have an opening statement. This one's a little lengthy because it's going to cover all my hearings, some parts of it. So don't expect me to speak this much in every hearing, please. Career literacy has been in all Campbell County middle schools for nine years now. This program has been installed to help with the literacy scores across the county. Career literacy gives middle school students in our four middle schools, it's in there to help students with difficulties with things like informal texts by focusing on reading, writing, speaking, listening, and reasoning through the lens of careers. Career literacy is a break from the traditional paper and pencil or computer assignments, is an opportunity to create businesses, hold mock elections, make campaign commercials, and learn persuasive speaking and budgeting, among other things. Best-case scenario for tonight is Ms. McClanahan would like to see all career literature saved for all of our middle schools. This is a great program that really engages students and helps close the learning gaps in literacy. Worst-case scenario, we'd like to see career literacy kept at Barbersville Middle, because it's our understanding, if you go with the superintendent's recommendation to cut career literacy at Barbersville Middle, you're cutting six positions and going right back and adding six positions at the school. So it's not a net gain financially. So what you'll be cutting are six certified English jobs from certified teachers, which are hard to come by now, as you're aware. And you're going to make three English Language Arts slash Social Studies positions and three Math slash Science positions. Those are very hard to find certified people for, anywhere in the state, not just Campbell County. So basically, like I said, you're going to cut six jobs just to go back and post six jobs. This solution is looking for problems, in our opinion. Lastly, how did we get here? Why are we yet again in front of you as the board this year with a massive amount of layoffs and transfers? We came together as a county, we passed the levy, but yet here we are cutting jobs and changing over 100 jobs, and there's a simple answer. Elections have consequences. Our state, and more specifically, Campbell County, is electing delegates and senators with the main goal to destroy public education in the name of the HOPE Scholarship. The expansion of this HOPE Scholarship continues to decimate public schools while allowing parents to take money to private schools or even across our state borders to other states. As long as this state continues to elect people whose sole purpose is to attack public education, then expect more and more of these hearings every year. However, remember, as the Board of Education, you're the boss. Not every recommendation made tonight is a good one. Last year, the AFT and the WVEA begged you not to cut Crossroads Academy because that would be bad for students. This board voted 5-0 on almost 150 RIF transfers last year, only to have programs like Crossroads Academy come back and reinstated with Mr. Hardesty. Thank you for it, Mr. Hardesty. So please listen to everyone tonight, and don't vote 5-0 for every recommendation. I guess 4-0 tonight. So, lastly, we're not here tonight because of anyone on this board, or frankly, anyone in this room. Mr. Hardesty is a great superintendent. He has great ideas, but we just don't agree with all of them. You're given a pot of money to educate, feed, and transport children. The problem is that pot of money continues to shrink because of the HOPE Scholarship and loss of population. We're basically paying parents to keep students at home or not in public schools. So, basically, we're not pointing the fingers at you as the board or you as the superintendent. It's not your fault. It's the people we elect. So that's why we're here tonight. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hardesty?
Yes?
He's too ready. Can you please explain to the board why you're recommending, and this should, well, this will go for the next two hearings, but why you're recommending career literature?
Yes, I would be glad to give it a shot. Ms. McClanahan, you spoke a couple meetings ago.
Yes.
You did very well, very eloquently. And the reason we're here this evening has nothing to do with your performance, the job that you do, the excitement you bring to the classroom. It's merely an issue, as I stated earlier, about our finances, which applied to all of these hearings today. And career literacy is something that was created by Campbell County Schools, and all of our teams throughout our middle schools also have an additional ELA teacher. And I realize it's a little different format that they bring to the table and a little different activities, but they do focus on reading and writing, and I appreciate that. At the end of the day, the reason they're here and the reason the recommendation is there is because that's 24 teachers and a grand total of $1,816,301 for those 24 positions. Mr. Tenney did hit on something that was considered that I do want to share with the board. And Ms. McClanahan, he's correct. Barbersville Middle School, due to their size, would, if this goes through as presented, would have to add back six positions, two for each grade level, to create a Team C. Just as he said, it would be a Social Studies, ELA, Math, Science. And we would look for dual certification for those positions for 6th, 7th, and 8th grade, because they don't have, their current staffing would not afford them to put everyone on two teams like the other three middle schools. So that is, while we are eliminating six career-lit positions, it does add six individuals back to that school. The reason that it is all of career-lit and then add those back is just due to my thoughts, and this is, again, it can be a board decision. And as Mr. Tenney said, the board has a difficult decision tonight. But the thought, the reason they're on there like that is because that would have Barbersville Middle School having a separate career literacy program, where the other schools, that would be in the core content. So teachers in the core content would take on different ones of those that would apply to their content area. Additionally, I think it's also important to note that while it is difficult to get individuals with dual certification, that is something that was told to all of our career-lit teachers that to look into taking the praxis for a social studies program as letters were being delivered. We tried to make sure that everyone knew that that was a possibility if it were to happen in the future.
And Mr. Hardesty, when making this decision, did you meet with other people?
I did. I met with all of our administrators in middle schools individually, and talked with them about the changes that need to come. They suggested some changes in the schools, and I asked them, because just to be quite frank, one of the concerns was that we just weren't really getting the amount of dollar savings that we needed. And when I asked them the difference, it would either be career-lit or the middle school model, which is where teachers have a team planning and an individual planning. All of the middle school principals seem to feel like that the middle school planning, they would like to keep the middle school concept. I'd also additionally want to just mention one thing that Ms. McClanahan talked about funding, that they receive funding due to the content of the class. She said that in a couple meetings ago, and she's absolutely correct. Campbell County Schools does not. However, CTE does get some funding for that. I believe the total's $58,000 per year for the CTE programs in middle schools. And that includes different options like Project Lead the Way or ag program and career literacy.
You said career has been around for about nine years. Can you tell the board how career literature began in Campbell County Schools?
Well, it's, my understanding, I was in elementary back in that time, but it's my understanding that was created as a way to work on the career clusters and career paths for students, as we do the high school model where they focus on careers. And it was a way to expose students to a multitude of careers. And they also, it's my understanding of how that happened. I was not part of that decision-making in the past, though.
Okay. But did Campbell County Schools develop a program for this, or how was it?
It's my understanding that was developed by our academic specialists upstairs in conjunction with the teachers that were working. But again, I can't tell you for sure. That's just my understanding of it.
And it has been stated that career literature is basically ELA in teaching our middle school students to read. Will our middle school students not have any type of reading programs if career literature is no longer in place?
They will. I don't think that's a representation of what career literacy is, though. I'm not trying to argue with you. I know you're representing the board, but I think career literacy is a lot more than just teaching reading. I think it's through a different lens, though.
But will our students learn reading in another classroom?
Yes, yes. All of the standards that are required to be taught within career literacy will be presented, are still with the ELA standard, the ELA teachers that students will have.
Okay. The last thing, just again, to reiterate, the cost of keeping all 24 of these teachers would be how much to the board?
$1,816,301. I would also, there's one other thing I think I need just to let the board know. If the board were to choose to keep the six at Barbersville Middle School, there's nothing that says that can't be done, because we do have to put six teachers back. Interestingly, though, those six would not be the ones that stay if that's what you chose to do. Most of them would, but there would be, I think, one that would not, looking at how risks and transfers are outlined by the state to do.
I have some questions for Mr. Hardesty. First of all, I wanted First of all, I wanted to reiterate, Mr. Hardesty, that we are not pointing the finger at you or the board, but I don't know if I should say AFT is, but Brandon Tenny from AFT is solely pointing the finger at our West Virginia legislator and our governor. I don't have the authority to say for my entire union, but I'm saying it for myself, so I just want to clarify that. Questions I have: are any of the career-lit teachers at Barbersville Middle School currently uncertified?
Not to my knowledge, no.
Do you feel as a whole that the career literature into middle school is beneficial to students in Cabo County?
Yes.
Is it getting harder and harder to find certified teachers?
Yes. Good questions, by the way, Mr. Tenny.
Thank you. Is there a plan to embed career literacy into CTE or into other programs, since it is a CTE-type program for next year, if this is adopted by the board?
Yes, those would be incorporated into the content areas within the school day.
Will there be less time for ELA in the middle schools if career literacy is cut?
Well, the technical answer would be no, because the bell schedule probably won't change, but as far as the amount of time to be devoted, of course, two teachers would be able to devote more time than just one.
So basically, half the time, correct? Or maybe a little more if the bell schedule's adjusted?
Well, I can't really answer that, because I'm gonna guess that they probably duplicate some standards throughout the course of the year.
Is there any other middle schools besides Barbersville that will need to repost jobs because of the number of students, or is it just Barbersville?
Just Barbersville, no others.
Okay. You mentioned that there was a discussion with administration, I believe, about which to cut, either the middle school model or career literature. Is that correct?
That's correct, but I would like to clarify, it's a very difficult conversation to have with an administrator, and in no way is a reflection on the administrator on their preference of who to keep or not to keep. It's just a difficult question, but it's one that I felt was important to get their input, because I met with our administrators like that, because when you have that kind of a change in the building, it's important for them to have a say in what happens to their school.
And, so I guess the principals and layman's turds had Sophie's Choice. You had to pick one or pick the other, correct?
Yeah, well, I would tell you that none of them would like to lose either, so, correct.
And then the last question: if career literacy is not cut solely at Barbersville Middle, will there be any savings as a whole for the county Board of Education?
Could you ask that again, I'm not sure if I'm wrong.
Is there, will there be a net savings if career literacy is cut at Barbersville Middle specifically? Since you're cutting six, adding six, there's no savings, is that correct?
It would depend on the six positions that come back, the difference in salaries.
Okay. So basically, the same number of positions, but there could be less money based on who's hired, correct?
Correct.
Okay. That's all the questions I have for Mr. Hardesty.
There's one clarifying question, and this is the question I attempted to ask about ELA. So there's still ELA in the middle school, correct?
Correct.
I don't want it to seem like we're gonna lose half the ELA, or our middle school students are not gonna be receiving the ELA they are required to and/or need to during their middle school career.
Correct. ELA would still be one of the core content classes.
I don't have any further questions for Mr. Hardesty. I do have some for Ms. McClanahan, if it's my turn, though.
I don't have any further questions, yes.
Yes, sir.
Every county does these hearings different, and I have seven, and every county does it correctly, they just do it their way. So it's, when you have the first couple hearings, it's kind of touch and go of the process. I apologize.
Absolutely, it is.
So what I would like for Ms. McClanahan to do is basically explain what career literacy is to her, what it does for the school and for the students, if she doesn't mind.
Sure. Yeah, I have a few, just a statement prepared, and there's also a couple other things I do, I want to draw your attention to, that has happened over the past few days. So I do just, there's some things I want to point out as far as the amount of instruction in the class during a normal day. So currently, what we do is we have the career literacy class, and then students also have Language Arts class, that's on each team, and that's for about 50 minutes in career lit, 50 minutes in Language Arts. And what's gonna happen is if we cut that career literacy class at Barbersville Middle School, and Mr. Hardesty, you said you weren't sure exactly if it would be, like, cut in half. Well, if you look at the numbers, it's gonna be cut in half. They're not gonna get that 50 minutes of that instruction there. And what happens is, my colleague and I, Mrs. Robin Christian, she and I work together, and we collaborate on, and she's my English teacher on my team, we collaborate really well, and we're able to kind of, like, divide and conquer, you could say, the vast amount of content standards that are responsible for our Language Arts teachers to teach. Of those, the majority of the ones that are more the informational text type, those are the ones that I take, but also I use time to reinforce a lot of the ones that she's teaching as well. So it's kind of a trade-off. So it's not that, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself. I do want to say that, and this is part of my statement, that we build lessons that support each other's goals. We reinforce each other's teachings, we show students how the skills they learn matter beyond the classroom. And I did want to draw your attention to, as far as career literacy at Barbersville Middle School, Mr. David Watson is our eighth-grade career literacy teacher, and I want to draw your attention to, today, the WVDE put out the middle school CTE updates for the month of April, and one of the main focuses there was Mr. Watson and his class in eighth grade. I've got it here, if you all want to look at it. It's not super long, I could read it if you want to, but it just focuses on Mr. David Watson and how he has started his job shadowing program, and he was able to get pretty much every student to get at least six hours out in the workplace. Had a total of 67 local businesses and locations that partnered to host those students, medical clinics, sports programs, salons, and offices. Then he even, he let one of the kids who was doing their job shadowing at Hair Concepts give him a haircut. So, and they did pretty good. So that's one thing there that I wanted to share with you all. Also, I have some former students that have sent me some things they'd like for me to read today, as far as showing importance of career literacy in their education. So I have one young lady, she's now in college, and she said, "I remember taking your class a couple years ago, now being in college, I still utilize the skills you taught me. Cutting this course is a huge mistake. Thank you for your hard work." One young lady said, "It was my favorite class in middle school, the one I always looked forward to. It taught in a way that was fun and interactive, which is a huge help to students with learning disabilities or students who learn better from hands-on activities. To take away this class would be a terrible mistake." I have another young lady, she said, "I struggle with reading and writing because of my dyslexia, and your class helped me grow and overcome my dyslexia. It's very unfortunate to see them take this away from students, especially those who struggle with reading and writing." And I did have one parent, who's a former math teacher, she said, "As a mom, as an upcoming sixth grader who struggles with reading, these kids need extra reading instruction from a certified teacher. As a former math teacher, I would not feel qualified teaching career-lit standards." And at the time, WVTS was where we were gonna have to embed those CDE standards. And that's all I have, I think. Thank you.
Do you have anything further?
I don't have any other witnesses.
Okay. No, you have questions?
I had the speaker in a bit help. Ms. McClanahan?
Yes.
Thank you. Did the evidence presented by the administration show a sufficient and non-frivolous reason for the recommended personal action?
At this time, I believe so.
Were you given an opportunity to respond to the administration's recommendation, offering reasons why the action should not be taken?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to ask relevant questions of the administration and receive answers from the administration?
Yes.
And were you given the appropriate notice of hearing procedures where they followed by the appropriate statutes?
One more time, could you say that, please?
Were you given the appropriate notice and hearing procedures, or were they followed with the appropriate statutes?
Yes.
Thank you. That's all, okay.
Any further?
Sorry.
Anything further?
I'll just have a quick closing, if we're allowed to do a closing.
I don't have any board member questions at this time. I do have one question, if you want to keep thinking. I believe Mr. Hardesty would probably be the one to answer this. If we were to keep career-lit at only Barbersville, and the other three middle schools would not have it, would we be requiring the ELA teachers at those three middle schools to do more than what we would be requiring the ELA teachers at Barbersville? Would they have a heavier workload, I guess, in my mind?
I hadn't thought about it from that aspect, but they would be required to do all of the ELA standards on their own. But I will say that adding career-lit never took any ELA standards from the ELA teacher either. There was never, and Ms. McClanahan mentioned that they kind of divide those up, that must be something they do, but that's not something that we have given guidance to do.
Last week, I judged the literature fair for middle schools, and I spoke to an ELA, I was partnered with an ELA teacher from Barbersville Middle School, and she was very concerned about the position being cut. She was very concerned about her having to shoulder the responsibilities and the skills that you teach. She also, she quoted me this stat, that 15% to 20% of their students at Barbersville Middle are reading on a K1 to 2 level. That was shocking. That was horrifying. I do have also a question about, I had several more, but, Mr. Hardesty, why is, why are you replacing these ELA positions, of course, career-lit with their ELA, with Math and Science? What was the reasoning for that?
Well, the way it would work is because of the way, the number of students Barbersville Middle School has, if career-lit was not there, the way you can spread out the classes more, you would have to, we have to create a Team C, and a Team C needs the core classes within them.
Gotcha. I understand now. Sometimes I have to hear things twice before I get it. All right. And you spoke to the administrator of all four schools, is that right?
Correct.
And they all want to keep, now, let me see, it's the team planning and the individual planning, and that's two planning, each teacher gets two planning periods a day then? Is that correct?
Well, sort of, but it's, one's a team planning, which means they are working as a team towards their students, which is what a middle school concept is. The other is an individual planning, yes.
Right. And you talked about that, how you talk about what skills you're gonna teach and what skills your partner, the person on your team is gonna teach.
I would like to clarify that question. They all wanted to keep them both, but if they had to choose one, it's not like they said, "Yeah, we don't need something." No one would do that, but they didn't either.
If they had to choose one, what'd they say?
If they had to choose one, yeah, they wanted to keep the team planning.
Oh, okay, okay.
Individual planning.
So, I taught briefly in a middle school, but it was sixth-grade self-contained, it was an unusual situation in Wayne County. I did that for a few years. So I do understand that middle schools were created based on intellectual development, social skills that are present at that time, and so on, I understand that whole concept. Oh, well, minimally, I understand that. But my question is, how could, if the middle schools went down to one team planning, how could that affect the decisions here?
Well, at this point, it can't, because if we were to do that, there would be no more strictly sixth-grade teacher, seventh-grade teacher, eighth-grade teacher. You would most likely, and I, I don't want to speak for other people, but we would have to reshuffle the way we work the schedule, because if you didn't have the team planning, you wouldn't need as many teachers in the building. So you might have an ELA teacher that teaches sixth grade and seventh grade, and instead of just on a sixth-grade team, you have maybe two grade levels. And so if you think about seven periods in a class day, then you really don't need as many people teaching all day if you don't have that second planning period to cover. So at the end of the day, not having the team planning would save the cost of employees, but it really takes away the middle school model. Now, to be quite frank with everyone here, if we continue to lose students like we are, we're not gonna be able to continue that going forward either, because it's something that's not in a funding formula to have two planning periods in a day. A lot of counties have already moved away from that model, and some do it in different ways, some will do a team planning in ELA and Math, some will do block scheduling in ELA Math. So there are different ways to do that, where you may keep the core areas of Math and Reading in that team planning, or some have went away from it altogether. There are very few that still have a true middle school concept, because it's just not funded by the state.
Does every student, at this point, have, every student in grade six, seventh, and eighth have career-lit every day, and in ELA class every day?
No.
No. Yeah, you're right, no.
That's not how it's scheduled.
Well, it's, when you look at, like, your special education populations.
Oh, okay.
Special education, gifted, a lot of times, it's depending on how they were used, gifted, those students are not involved in it, but the rest are.
I don't know that this is the question for this particular conversation, but when I hear that statistic, that 15% to 20% of middle school kids are between sixth and second grade, I mean, K through second-grade reading level, maybe there is a population that does need to have ELA twice a day, and maybe there's a big population that doesn't need that twice a day. I think I'm finished.
I have actually two questions. You started to hit on one there a little bit. I know some students have IEPs, especially the talented and gifted students. IEPs are addressed in career-lit. How will we address those IEPs without career-lit?
That's something we'll just have to work out and make sure that the teacher that services those students can still make sure that they have an ample opportunity to work with them.
Okay. And then, one question from Mr. Tenny. You represent seven counties, you said, I think?
That's correct.
Are there any other counties that have career-lit, or just Cabo?
I don't think any other county in the state has career-lit, if that's correct, Mr. Hardesty.
It's my understanding that's correct. And to answer your other question, they still have an ELA class that it could be, the gifted IEPs could be addressed in there if it's ELA-related.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, you have to address the IEP.
Correct.
So it would be done, have to be accomplished. Can't get around that. Okay. Any further questions, Ms. Hornbuckle Myers?
No.
Any further questions, Mr. Tenny?
I don't have any other questions.
Okay. Your closing statement?
No, I don't have one.
Closing statement?
I have a quick one. Today is Ms. McClanahan's birthday. She could be anywhere in the world today, but she chose to be here with you on her birthday. Happy birthday.
Thank you, I'm halfway to 90, that's what I keep telling her.
And, basically, Ms. McClanahan, she has a job next year. She's not here fighting for her. She's on the transfer list. Her pay, her benefits, nothing changes next year. Where she reports may change, and what she teaches may change, but she's here for the program and for her school, not just herself. Just want to reiterate, you're cutting six at Barbersville Middle to add six back, and those six back, we can't guarantee will be certified, while we already have certified people there now currently. And if you've been on the board for some time, you probably realize, once you cut a program, it never comes back. I've never seen programs come back once they're cut, personally, in my 17 and a half years at AFT. We would like to have career literature in all of our schools, but if that's not a possibility... We would like to have career literature in all of our schools, but if that's not a possibility, at least keep the program alive at Barbersville Middle. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up?
Yes, sir, we have Mr. David Watson, a career literature teacher at Barbersville Middle School.
Good evening.
Hello, Ms. Watson.
And public's fine too.
Thank you.
So, I'm sorry, I'm, I'm very under the weather, but I made sure to drag myself out today.
Thank you.
But yes, what Ms. McClanahan said was accurate. Last week, I had a kid cut my hair. I felt like she did a good job.
You're good.
She was very nervous, but it was fun. So I, I teach eighth grade career literacy, and there's a couple of comments. I'll, I'll try to keep it kind of brief, you know? Again, not feeling the best. But I think it's, it's important to understand that career literacy and our language arts class are both ELA programs. It's not that, well, we have career literacy and we have ELA. The content that we teach is always through the lens of careers. Just like, you know, my counterpart on my team, Ms. Stewart, you know, she just recently read The Outsiders with the kids. It would be in, you know, kind of a mischaracterization of her class to suggest, oh, well, the point of her class is novels, and she's hitting the ELA standards while she's doing it. Everything that is informing the lessons that I create, at their core, are those reading, writing, speaking, listening, language acquisition skills. We're just doing it through some of these more authentic assessment-style projects and activities. Now, one part I did incorporate into my class this year is a one-day activity where kids get a, basically, field trip pass. It counts as if they're at school, where they get to go and they job shadow somewhere. But even while they're doing that, they're working on things like their public speaking skills. They have to interview the person that they're shadowing. They have to write reflection questions afterwards and everything. So there's like a lot of reading and writing related to that. So that's one point I would like to touch on. As to what Ms. Childers, you know, spoke about with students who are really struggling with reading comprehension, that is something that unfortunately, we see students who are making their way to the middle school, and they are regularly not reading anywhere close to level. I'm actually kind of surprised it's that low. I would not be surprised, you know, depending on the assessment you gave, if it was higher. It is not uncommon for me, even in the, at the eighth grade point, to have kids that, so I might look at their reading scores, and they might be reading at a fourth grade level, and then we can look at their data from the last year, and maybe it was a second grade level. And so like, we do see that we are making some gains, and even gains at a faster rate than, you know, what, than, it's not just year to year, like, you know, they add one year, and so they went up one level, maybe they go up two levels. But I am really concerned that, you know, like Ms. McClanahan, you know, pointed out through Mr. Tenney, I know I have a job next year. And I know that the county has to save money, and I don't hold, you know, Mr. Hardesty, I know he has to make, you know, a difficult decision as far as how to allocate funds. I know you guys do too. I'm really worried that if we slash the amount of time that students are dedicated towards, you know, learning those ELA skills, that it's not going to look pretty in the long run. I know that surrounding counties have, you know, there's this question of, well, do other counties have career lit? Career lit is essentially just a reskin of where we used to have language arts and reading. They were both ELA positions. Reading was just kind of recalibrated to move a little bit away from fictional text and more into, hey, let's hit some informational, nonfiction-based stuff, and cover these career clusters while we're at it. But as far as an average, you know, project or class period for me, a lot of it's going to involve research, writing. Today, I was talking with my students about, you know, how to formulate a narrative essay, you know, just trying to. And, and then also touching on some details with thesis statements, just to kind of help set them up for success, where we have state testing this week. You know how it is, like, those of you who taught in the classroom, sometimes you can cover a subject five times, but you'll always see a little bit better of performance if you review it ahead of time. It's kind of like why you review for a test. And I'm just, I don't know how it's going to play out for students in the long run. I, I have a feeling that the data will, would support the idea that the less time kids are going to be spending reading and writing, the less they're going to develop those skills. I, I think, and I know that it's a hard decision to make. I know that there's a lot of funding tied up in it. I think what we as a county should look at, if, I don't know if there's the time, I don't know if there's the ability to, but when I talk to people at my school, and I talk to people at other schools, one area where I have seen teachers universally say, we feel like we as a county are not allotting funding in a, in the best way, is towards like acquisition of materials like textbooks. Almost every teacher I talk to is like, instead of us having a one-to-one textbook, we have one-to-one devices. We spent all this money to set up our kids with iPads. It's very easy, as an English language arts teacher, for me to go and grab a PDF of a story. Or if I just have a one-classroom set of like books, that, you know, that's what the language arts teacher on my team said, that's all she needs. She needs one classroom set of books, and then she's able to utilize the devices that the county's already provided through things like iPads. I'm just curious how much money we could save if we were to take a look at which teachers are actually using textbooks? Because we have a lot of these, you know, what do they call them? Consumable textbooks, where the textbooks have to be repurchased every year, even if they're not used, even if they're barely utilized. It's not uncommon for me to see textbook after textbook, these, that are split up into these workbooks, that kids aren't writing the first thing in, because again, we've moved so much to digital platform stuff through Schoology. I wouldn't wonder if we could save the career literacy program and offset the cost by looking at how we're allotting funding to that stuff, so that we have people actually teaching the material with the resources we already have available, without worrying about so much about spending all this money with these, you know, textbook companies. It's just a thought. I can tell you that I've had a lot of students who've told me that they've learned things about what they want to do for a living through my class. I've had students who are going into different fields, that I get them out in public, and they say that they wanted to go into this or to that, you know, just because of things that they got to do in my class. You know, this, as we speak, you know, I'm in my agriculture unit, and last year, I got to bring a bunch of beekeepers to my school, like, there's a monastery out in Wayne County, and I got to bring, like, some of the monks that I'm friends with, and I got to talk to my students about what it's like to create a business around beekeeping and all the products involved with that. And we got to do a little research project based on that in class. During my engineering unit, I had students researching about how NASA wants to go to Mars, and they got to present, you know, you can look at our Barbersville Middle School Facebook, and you'll see pictures of, we had a big thing where we invited people from the community to come in and see the research that students were putting in. And they had to put themselves in the position of speaking as if they were engineers, instead of talking as if they were middle school students. I said, speak as if you're an engineer. Speak as if, you know, you were actually presenting this to people who could hire your engineering firm. During health science, that, you know, it's not just that, hey, let's research what an EMT does, but then I'll take a day where I go to the bus garage, and I get all the inflatable CPR dummies, and I teach the students how to do CPR. A few years ago, we even got, I think it was 40 of our eighth graders certified through the, you know, American Heart Association, First Aid and CPR. That, you know, it gives them a lot of skills that are valuable to the community. It works, first and foremost, on those reading and writing skills. And I think it's just a good program and something worth looking at, are there other ways we can offset the cost? So.
Thank you. Ms. Hornbuckle Myers, do you have?
I have a few questions for, same questions. So did the evidence, well, you heard the evidence presented by Mr. Hardesty for Ms. McClanahan.
Yes.
First of all, Mr. Hardesty, did you have anything different to say for Mr. Watson?
Well, I would like to thank you for what you've done, and what all of our teachers do, and service personnel. Congratulations on not only the haircut, but the article. And, you know, it's, again, you're right. No one wants to eliminate programs.
Yeah.
We have just gotten to a point, as a county, I'm sure you heard the statistics earlier, we have just gotten to a point where we are living way beyond our means. And at some point, we're not going to be able to do that. Fortunately, the board has, over the past several years, shown some reserves and built up the reserves that, that helps us right now, and we can, we can weather a few storms. But long-term financial stability, there are just some difficult decisions that will have to be made. And, you know, I, I do appreciate what you do, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. So the evidence presented by Mr. Hardesty before Ms. McClanahan's hearing shows sufficient and non-frivolous reason for the recommended personal action.
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to respond to the administration's recommendation, offering reasons why the action should not be taken?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to ask relevant questions of the administration and receive answers from them?
Yes.
And were you given the appropriate notice of hearing procedures, or was the statute followed?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Thank you.
Anything further from you?
No, sir.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Watson.
Next, we have Ms. Melissa Lowe. She's a school counselor at Huntington East Middle School. She's on transfer, and I believe she's represented by Ms. Catricia Martin of WVEA this evening. And she, oh, wait. Don't steal pens. Ms. Lowe, did you specify public or private? Public is okay? Okay.
Opening statement?
I just, again, we have Ms. Lowe here, a school counselor at Huntington East Middle School, and she's on the transfer list this evening.
All right.
Ms. Martin.
Ms. Martin, do you have an opening statement?
This is on, okay. I'm here today to represent Melissa Lowe, who is a counselor in Campbell County Schools, and she has been a counselor for a little while. And she would like to stay a counselor. The proposed transfer that she received in her letter is terminating her current contract from a 210-day to a 200-day contract. And while we're not certain what her transfer has in store, it appears that she's being taken from a counselor role to possibly a teaching position. So our stance today is just that her seniority was not considered in this decision. Aside from being a school counselor, Ms. Lowe in the past has also been a graduation coach. And, you know, when we look through the evidence and the documentation throughout the county, every time that her name was listed as the graduation coach, it was on the counseling staff. And we have some documentation we'd like to provide, just showing that. So we think that she would be left, you know, as a counselor would be the correct move, given her seniority in the county as a counselor in the past. And that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have copies for everyone?
I sure do.
Okay, I was going to ask, thank you. Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hardesty, we're here today again with Ms. Lowe. Please explain to the board what occurred, and how we got to where we are today with Ms. Lowe.
Yes, as we just discussed earlier, first of all, hi, Ms. Lowe, hi, Ms. Martin. As we discussed earlier, we're here because of the elementary counselors, some potential elimination, recommended changes there. And because of the way state code reads, it requires us to look at counselors with, within their counselor seniority. And so counselors ended up, more senior counselors that were impacted in the elementary changes impacted Ms. Lowe in her current position. And also, as they go, that's the reason that her letter, as she read, has a elimination of her 215, or was it 210? 210-day contract. Because she would be going to a, transferred to a 200-day contract. And so that's why there's an elimination of one and then a transfer. So that's why we're here today. It's strictly because of the elementary changes and due to seniority. She did say that, she, Ms. Martin mentioned that we, she felt like we were not considering her previous seniority. If you look at the front page of what she gave you, that's the Campbell County Public Schools Job Description, where she was, I believe, the-
Attendance worker?
Graduation.
Graduation coach. In order to be a graduation coach, I should have looked at, it's on the top. In order to be a graduation coach, the qualifications, you had to have one or more of the following certifications. And we'll see, teaching certificate, administrator's certificate, social worker, attendance worker, psychologist, counselors, or bachelor's degree with a minimum of five years. That is not considered counseling seniority, because it didn't require a counseling degree. It was one that could be used, but it didn't require that. And so her, her seniority as a counselor, when looking at it under the state code, the applicable one is for the time she's employed as a counselor with that requirement. So we feel like we've, we've applied that, that code correctly, to be honest with you. But we feel like that the counselor's seniority, that, we don't have a separate counselor senior, we have to pull them off and separate them when we do something like this. Because seniority is county basis, but depending on how employees are hired, is, is to what classification they're in, in professional. So.
I don't have anything else for Mr. Hardesty.
Ms. Martin, you have anything further?
We do. I would like to give Ms. Lowe an opportunity to talk, if that's okay.
Absolutely.
Okay, and also just walk you through what each of these items are in her packet.
Yes. So if you look at the qualifications for the job that was listed, it does say, a school counselor or a bachelor's degree with a minimum of five successful years that required the counseling and mentoring as a significant job responsibility. So it doesn't really, it's not really focused on, sorry, someone that's teaching. It is focusing on counseling and mentoring. So when I applied for this job, I was brought in as part of the counseling department. I was not brought in as a teacher, I did not have a classroom. Which brings me to, I have items for you guys. So that was item one, my job description. Item two, if you go to the school finance page and you pull up my name, that's what I printed off, in 2020, which was when I was, one of the years that I was a grad coach, it has my name listed under high school counselor. Which I guess, I feel like reiterates the fact that it was a counseling position. If you look at item three, I have, if you looked down the list there, the previous grad coach, every year that you pull her up on the finance page, she is also listed under high school counselor. When it comes specifically to job seniority, the reason why I feel like my years were not counted, and they should have been, if you look at item four, it is the board agenda from the Riffman transfers, where the previous grad coach was moved into a high school counseling position, where she bumped another counselor based off of her years as grad coach for her seniority. So I also requested my hiring matrix and my application for my current job, which is a counseling job. And I was told that there, we couldn't get access to that. But I also have my current position based off of my four years' experience as a counselor as graduation coach, which was signed off on by the board. The board said, hey, you know, you can have this job because you have the points for seniority. So it just feels like the graduation coach job was a counseling job when I bid on it. It was a counseling job when I had it. It was a counseling job when I was applying for another job. It was a counseling job when someone else was bumping someone when it came to seniority. The only time that it has not been a counseling job is right now.
And I believe you also have some letters.
I do also have some letters.
We're not going to read those letters word for word, but would you mind telling us who had submitted letters in your support?
I have a couple of letters from teachers, specifically, one is a, our department chair for special ed, and also our ESL teacher at our school that just discusses the importance of our students having some consistency. I mean, I too got a transfer, so I will have a job next year. It will be a pay cut. But also, our kids will now have- But also, our kids will now have two new counselors to them. It will be, I think, the tenth and eleventh, maybe eleventh and twelfth counselor that they've had since 2013. They have had absolutely no consistency when it comes to their student support. And so for me, it is very important for them to come in next year and see a familiar face of someone that loves them and supports them, if we can make that happen.
Anything else?
That's all we have.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Warren Buckle Myers, do you have some questions?
I have some questions for Ms. Lowe, and someone just ran out to make a few copies for me. But I looked at item number four of what she presented, Ms. Lowe or Ms. Martin, and I see here that Ms. Jordan went to Huntington High School counselor position. What proof do you have that this was based upon her years as counselor or her years as graduation coach?
She was not a counselor. She was only a graduation coach previous to taking that position.
I need to reword that question. Any evidence of the seniority that they used, how they placed her, what they did to place her, or how she received this position?
We did not bring that with us today, but we felt like that this item was sufficient, just showing the decision that was made by the board previously.
Okay, but we don't have anything with her certification, if she had a counseling certification. I hate to talk about someone else, but if she had a counseling certification or anything like that, we don't have any of that evidence here this evening, do we?
Not with us this evening, no.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Hardisty, I can ask you that too. Okay.
Well, while I can't dispute some of the things that Ms. Lowe said, because I wasn't involved in all of those, and I certainly don't have that in front of me, what I can tell you about the transfer from subsequent assignment to high school counselor is the way transfers work. County seniority is county seniority. When it comes to a counselor position, when a teacher, regardless of what field they're working on, if their position is eliminated, they go on a list, just like we did for this one. You go from seniority from highest to lowest. The most senior person takes the least senior person's position. And so you may have someone, if you're eliminating an art position, you may have someone that's taught 25 years, that's never been a counselor, that bumps into a counselor, because under state code, a counseling position is the same as a teaching position, except that when we go to eliminate a counselor position, we look at counselor's seniority together. So it doesn't really prevent someone bumping into a counselor position if they hold that certification. And here, I would guess, and I don't know, but I would guess that she had a counseling certification and bumped into that position. Because on subsequent assignment, if you look at our current agenda, everyone that's on transfer goes to subsequent assignment. And any of that are approved, the next meeting, we place them in a position, because you have to go to where someone's currently at. If that made any sense at all.
It did. It was much better than my question.
Although I can't tell you why she got there, I don't know.
Since I have you answering questions, I have here in my pack, and I can get a copy for the board, is the graduation coach posting. And if you could read for me the first one under responsibilities of a graduation coach, please.
"In collaboration with counselors, teachers, administrators, and parents, identify students in grades six through twelve who have a high probability of not graduating from high school."
So it clearly says "in collaboration with counselors", not that they are counselors. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. And Ms. McCoy just has the copies of Ms. Lowe's, her bid sheet. She did ask for her application sheet. I will state, when you do that, when you do an original application for Campbell County Schools, you have all that information, but once you start bidding on different positions, it doesn't go back to that original application. So this is her bid sheet, and you can see on there, it has six years of support experience, with nothing listed specifically under, and she has a copy for you too, as well, Ms. Martin, counseling experience.
Any board member questions at this time? I don't think so. You have a closing statement?
Well, you had a few questions for Ms. Lowe.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry, no, I went back and forth. Did the evidence presented by the administration sound sufficient and not frivolous reason for the recommended action?
Yes.
Was the employee given, were you given an opportunity to respond to the recommendation and offer reasons on your own why the action should not be taken?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to ask relevant questions of the administration and receive answers from them?
Yes.
And did you receive the appropriate notice of hearing, followed by the appropriate statutes?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to stay here with Ms. Lowe. I appreciate her coming this evening. It's gotta take some nerve for everyone, sorry, not just you, but everybody. I appreciate that. I appreciate what everybody in here does every day. And I thank them from the bottom of my heart. I truly, truly do. I will state that the allegations that they've made this evening, there's no actual proof of what the process was or what was done, that did or did not follow the rules as far as seniority is regarded, as far as seniority in having her transfer to the position that she's transferring in. I don't see anything that they've given us that would state that the board did this erroneously, arbitrarily, or capriciously. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Closing statement?
Yeah, we do. So Melissa Lowe has been in the county for 11 years, and she has loved working in Campbell County Schools. She loves serving students, and she does a great job regardless of what role that she has been in. But her favorite role and what I feel like she thrives in is the counseling role. She has a lot of students at the middle school who feel comfortable talking to her, you know. And she makes sure that she goes above and beyond to service these students. Middle school is not an easy age. It takes a special person who can relate to them. It takes a special person who can help them deal with things, even just behavioral issues in the classroom. And she does a great job of that. So everything aside, we would just like for your consideration to remain in the counseling role. And additionally, you know, looking at a two-ten day contract to a two-hundred day, that's 10 days difference in pay. So we would ask for you to consider that as well, that this, while done correctly procedurally in terminating her contract, we would ask for you to consider to leave her in the counseling role at a two-ten and not take a pay cut. And that's all we have, and we thank you for letting us come this evening and hear us.
Thank you.
Can I say something?
I want to say something as well, but go ahead.
I want to thank you for your work, and I want to thank you for your bravery coming here. And I so appreciate the words you said about wanting to be a support for those middle school students. I'm sure that they love you. You expressed your love for them. And it does concern me that you feel like things weren't counted appropriately. I feel confident that our team did count them the way they count them. I feel like it was probably, it's hard to consider that the way you look at it is different than the way the county looks at it. I'm sure that's difficult for you, but I so appreciate you being in our county. Thank you.
Before you all leave, is it okay if I say something?
Yes.
I just want to follow up with you. The sheet that you're looking at, that you listed as a high school counselor, that is from the certified list, which is something that we key in and professional and personnel, and service both. And that's what our reimbursement is based on. So I will verify that, and it's my wholehearted belief that we're correct on the list that we have. But if the board, I just want you to know, if the board votes to go ahead and accept my recommendation, and I find that we're wrong, we'll rescind the transfer, so, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, sir. Now we have Mr. James Ford. He's a science teacher, science teacher at Campbell-Millan High School.
We would like a closed hearing, please.
Yes, sir.
Yes, ma'am. Do you have a motion to go into executive session?
I move that we go into executive session to hear this-
Person.
This person's-
Personnel matter.
This personnel matter.
All right, we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel matter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're in executive session.
I make a motion that we come back into open session.
We have a motion to return to open session. We have a second. I'll second. I seconded already, sorry. All in favor of returning to open session, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're back into open session. Ms. Warren Buckle Myers, next on our list.
Yes, sir. The next person we have is Ms. Mallory Baker. She's a business education teacher at Career Technical Center, and she is represented by Mr. Brandon Denny.
We'd like a closed hearing again, please.
Okay, thank you, sir. I need a motion to return to executive session.
Make a motion that we return to executive session to deal with personnel hearing.
Okay, we have a motion and a second by Mr. Abess. All in, Ms. Smalley. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. We're returning to executive session. Motion to return to open session?
I'll make a motion.
And a second? Okay, we have a motion and a second to return to open session. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, we're back in open session. Next up, Ms. Warren Buckle Myers?
Yes, sir. The next person is Melissa Ash. She's the principal at the Campbell County Career Technology Center. Ms. Martin, does she want an open or closed?
Just need a motion to go into executive session for personnel matter? All right, we have a motion to go into executive session for personnel matter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're in executive session. Need a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
All right, we have a motion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. We're back in open session. Ms. Warren Buckle Myers, next on our list.
Yes, sir. We have Mr. Travis Baker. He is the assistant principal of the Campbell County Career Technology Center. And I believe Ms. Martin stated he would like a closed hearing as well.
Okay. Just need a motion to return to executive session. Okay, second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion to return to executive session for personnel matter. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Back in executive session. Need a motion to return to open session?
So moved.
All right. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? We're back in open session. Ms. Warren Buckle Myers, next?
Yes, sir. We have four people that are going to do their hearings together. All T S T Ss, we have William Richards, Richard Black, Felicia Backus, and Kristy Schaefer.
Oh, technical people.
Yes, ma'am. T S T S. Richard, William Richards is at Milton Middle School, Richard Black, Huntington Middle School. Ms. Backus is at Barbersville Middle School, and Ms. Schaefer is at Huntington East Middle School. If you all wouldn't care to introduce yourselves as you go up, and then that way we have some. You have one person speaking for all of you all, or you all speaking to? Okay, that's, that's-
Okay, well, we'll start with Mr. Richards.
Yes, okay. Yes, sir. Sorry, I was misunderstood.
Richards, I'm the T S T S at Milton Middle School. I just kind of wrote out what I wanted to say, and then we can, all right, I'll let you, hopefully, let you hear me. So after being informed that I would be transferred next year and that my position would be consolidated, I stepped, this kind of thought of that day, is I stepped down to the main office and just kind of like tried to beeline it to my desk, so I could just hide for a little bit and kind of, you know, collect my thoughts. I kind of knew this was a possibility, that this job would end. I was kind of told that whenever I talked to the principal before I bid on it. He said, like, this might not be a sure thing, but, you know, we need it right now. And, but after four years, and having my colleagues say, ah, you'll be fine, every RIF season, you're not gonna, no, you're good. We can't do this without you. Like, there are a lot of that, a lot of that going around. I go, oh, okay, I get a little soft. I guess I would, I began to think, maybe they're right. Maybe, maybe it's, I am a positive addition to our school. Maybe this is a good thing. Start feeling like, hey, I'm doing something now. So it still kind of hit me a little hard getting that transfer. But as I'm, this is going through my head, going to my desk, a student stops me in the hallway, as they always do, and says, hey, something weird's happening. And she had, while I was in the meeting, she had filled out my tech form. So I created a tech form in the library, so if students need my assistance, they fill it out. I immediately get a notification on my watch and phone that's saying who the kid is, what the problem is, and I can go find him real fast. Or if I happen to be in my office, I can pop up and say, hey, what's wrong? Assuming that student, the problem she was having was every time she hit the E button on her iPad, the emoji menu would pop up, and she wasn't able to type the letter E. And this was weird, and I was like, I've never done this. I've never dealt with this. Let's go to the library and figure it out. So we sat there, we put it down, we went through some troubleshooting issues together, and it took us about five minutes. It was fixed. I showed her how we fixed it. We learned together. And she went back to class and finished her essay. That's the moment when I thought, if, what would this situation look like if the T S T S wasn't at the school? That student, in that situation, would need to tell her teacher. The teacher would need to put in a support request. And then the support ticket would sit there until the T S T S shows up to that school. It's my understanding that next year, the T S T S division will be split between two schools. Barbersville, Milton, Huntington, Huntington East. So if that happens on a Monday and the T S T S is at Barbersville, they'll have to wait till the next day to fix the issue, when I fixed it in five minutes on the day. Didn't waste any time. The student was able to get back to class and get back to work. So far this year, MMS students have submitted 312 requests using the student tech form that's in the library. This isn't counting the students that stopped me in the hallway, or the ones the teachers send down, nor does it count for the parents that call in and ask for my help. They say, can you help me create a student, or my parent's school G account, so I can message my teachers without my kids really seeing what I'm saying? Or can you help me how, help me figure out how to work this iPad? Or this, well, other words can be said, but I won't repeat those. So aside from the daily support requests that we receive as T S T Ss, they also have, we also have other duties assigned to us. For example, at the beginning of each school year, we are tasked with collecting the student's acceptable use of policy, device management agreement, and damage waivers. These forms are required to be turned in each year by the student to allow them to use the technology in our school, or if it's a new enrollee, to be issued a device. Putting this task on the T S T S ensures that every student is accounted for when using devices, as well as keeping documentation for any legal issues that may arise. I also have, with help from Felicia from Barbersville, and our head cook, Angie, took it upon myself to create a lunch count system that was more efficient than what we were using. Before, the secretaries would collect the lunch account and hand it sheets physically, like go to each hallway, grab the sheets, go back to the desk, put in the lunch count into a table or a form, print it off, take it over to the cook. That would take probably till nine o'clock before they get that done. Now, my teachers fill out a form. It puts it into an Excel form that Angie opens up on her computer and prints, and the lunch count's done by eight o'clock. I didn't have to do that. It wasn't on my job description. But Angie came to me and said, can we, can we do this? Is there, what can we do? And I said, I don't know, but let's figure it out. Because that's, that's what I do. That's what we all do, actually. And those are, those, I'm sorry, this is public speaking hard. I feel, and I'll get into that here in a minute too. I think this is karma for something that's later in my list of things. But all this is, you know, said, if it's done, we'd get this done by eight. It's reducing, you know, the time, but it's also saving food costs, because Angie's getting accurate counts every day for each grade level lunch and all the lunches that we do. So I know she's really appreciative of that. She tells me that every day. She's one of those that say, Richards, I don't know what I'd do without you, you know, I hear that a lot. And I have to tell her, uh, we'll see what happens, so. But as you, as you may know, the TSTS stands for Technical Support and Training Specialists. So I've just really described the technical support side, just snippets of it. And my colleagues will probably have a lot more to let you know about. But we also are training specialists. And just some examples that I can go into that is like, at the beginning of the year, you know, the, the first is staff, staff PD. We offer professional development for sessions that our school staff has, but sometimes it's even countywide. Jason will ask us, hey, I need someone to do this at this countywide thing. Can you teach this? Can you, you know? And we hop up and do it, because that's one of those things we were asked to do, we're training specialists. And that's, and that's a pretty effective way to kind of help with, with the education here at King Campbell County Schools. And these sessions range from using specific programs, troubleshooting tips, or even lesson ideas that we can integrate the technology that the teachers have, or might be getting. But there's, there's other ways that we help in this, and that is with, we are in the building with our teachers, and we can go in the classroom and help the teachers use the technology. I've had several instances where a teacher would come to me and say, hey, I want to use this app in my class, but I need help figuring out how to get everyone on board. Or getting, I mean, I just, I just, I just need a little push to get the students going. So I say, all right, what day you want to do this? And I schedule it out and we do it. It's, it's not a big deal. I can go in for the first 15, 30 minutes of class. If somebody needs any tech help, I can hop over and fix that. Saves time. A smarter man would have just read this verbatim. But this also gives, the, the thing that's really great about this is we get hands-on, we get to teach, I still get to teach. Like, you know, that's, I, I'm, I'm a, I'm a teacher, or I was. And so I do miss doing that. I, I work with the kids a lot, and it's nice to get back in the classroom and also just be there to help. But to teach the teachers how to use this stuff. So next year, I don't have to go in to a classroom and do the same lesson again, because the teacher already knows how to do it now. So every year, if something new comes up, that's great, but if it's something that we did last year, they've already figured it out. And it may take a couple of goes. I know with like, with related arts, you know, we have five, they rotate, you know, have five different terms that they rotate, and so maybe I'll go in at the beginning of each term for a computer lesson, or something that if choir wanted to work with Garage Band or something like that. But the teachers request my help, and I, I give it to them. And that's, that's the training aspect of it. So we do help with that. But our services are not bound to the school either. Jason Jackson has set up teams, a, a teams group with all the tech people in the county, and we pop in to answer questions and help out elementary sysops and each other daily. Which, if you, if you talk to your elementary sysops, they're, they're teachers that help with technology in their building, which means their top priority is teaching. And then they can, if they're extra time, if they have, you know, they, they have to set aside just enough time to just fix whatever tech issues they can, we help out with that. I get messages from my feeder schools. I get text messages from Mr. Bailey in Ona saying, hey, you got a minute? Because he's on his planning, and he's trying to get these iPads fixed. And so we talk, we get them fixed, and it's done. Because I have time to help them. And I can actually help remotely, too, with some of the technologies that we have with, especially with these iPads. But, and, and like I said, this, this, our position, this TSTS position gives us flexibility to evaluate issues, troubleshoot, and run tests that the sysops just don't have time to do. We've also reduced the amount of support tickets, redundant support tickets that we've had. For example, just this week, or sorry, last week, we had an outage around 3:00 a.m. I think it was about two hours. You know, we were all sleeping, some of us. But just around that time, we have a script that runs that resets all the accounts for every student, kind of keeps things up to date. And it got paused in the middle of that and caused all of these student accounts to be disabled. So I'm at the school at 6:45 every day, and one of the teacher's kids that happens to get stuck there that early, came to me and said, hey, I can't get into clever. I said, oh, that's weird. And I tried it, and I looked at it, and I was like, okay. And then another student came to me and said, hey, I can't get into clever. So I'm, I'm already, I've already seen the issue. I, I looked, looked into it. I sent a ticket in, one ticket, before anybody else could. Jason called me on Teams, said, hey, what's going on? I gave him all the info that I, I collected. He called Pat. Pat fixed it, 7:30, 8:00, we're good to go. Everyone's fine. The elementary schools haven't even started yet. They didn't even know it was an issue. I wasn't there for someone to run in and say, hey, can you? How long would it be before, or not necessarily how long would it take? Pat's pretty quick at fixing things when he knows what the problem is. I'm not going to deny him that. But the amount of junk supports requests that come in, that muddy up everything, hey, this ain't working, this ain't working, this ain't working, no details. It's, it's severely reduced when you have some, when you have people like us that know the ins and outs of how all the technology integrates and works within our system. And now for something a little more personal and specific. So when I interviewed for this job, the principal at the time, Kurt Mann, asked me if I would be interested in working with the librarian, Laura Grass, and some of the students want a new show for the school. And I said yes. And for the next four years, I spent my lunch and sometimes after school making a new show called The Roar. Over the past four years, The Roar's had 22 cast members, 78 episodes, four music videos, several PSAs and advertisements for the school, and some memorable holiday specials. The students would watch the episodes on Fridays in the cafeteria altogether. They'd start to dance in their seats when the theme song came on. They'd laugh hysterically at whatever silly thing we can get Mr. Chapman to do. And I will miss working with Mrs. Grass and the students, because it was just an awesome experience. But I think the students are going to miss it as well, because it's just not going to happen with, without, without me being there. I'm not saying a lot about me. I don't like talking about myself like that, but I really like, I was very passionate about this. It was just fun, and the kids enjoyed it. And we got to do a contest this year for the Explore Manufacturing's, new, Explore New Manufacturing Group that works with a lot of STEM programs in the state. We got second place in our region for the Viewer's Choice Region Video Contest. We got second place, I feel like, because we were on spring break when the contest was going, so no one was able to watch the video. But not bad for just, for being on spring break. But that entered us into the, the state level competition, which they will announce the winners on May 14th, I believe, and it's a virtual thing, so. But we, we went to Blenko Glass Company for the day. They, we were on the hot shop floor. They were making the glass. We were asking questions while they're making things. The, you know, the kids had planned. It was, it was awesome. So if you haven't seen the video, you can go to Explore the New Manufacturing's YouTube page. Tell all of your friends and enemies to watch it. Just, you know, it might help us get a little further up in the placement on that, on that. I don't know if we win anything. I just, I just, they did an awesome job, and I want them to get all the credit they can get. I'm sorry, I'm taking all this time. I think this is the last page. Phew. All right, now, back to the matter at hand. We start school next year, and the people, all the people that depend on these services at Huntington Middle School, Huntington East Middle School, Barbersville, Milton, and the, and the Campbell County Career Technical Center, will not receive the quality service that they have received the past four years. This is something that is out of my hands, so I'm not going to take the blame for it. So read that as you will, but it's going to be tough. And I'm sure that the, I, I, like, as I said, I understand how it's going to be redone the way I understand it. Yeah, it might work, but the person in that position is, is going to be overwhelmed and unable to deliver what is expected from that position. By consolidating these positions, we are reducing the convenience of immediate response to tech issues in the building. Yes, with what, you know, it's, 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 with the current plan, that the, the TSTSs has usually responded to, and fix these issues sometimes within minutes of requests being made. What, what we have now, I mean, we, we're, we're quick. And I'm sure Rick and Felicia and Kristy and Mike will, will even give you a lot more detail about how fast and how efficient they are, and how effective they are at this, at this position. I feel like this is all, it's like if I, if I told my wife, we can save money on our water and sewer bill by digging a hole in the backyard to do our business, and with the money we can save, I reckon we, I, I, we could put walls around it and a roof on it for privacy. I imagine her reply would be, what is wrong with you? That's a stupid idea. I'm requesting that you reevaluate this recommendation to terminate this contract, not for me or the other TSTSs, but for the students, the teachers, the administrations, the service personnel, and the parents that we serve in Campbell County Schools. Thanks for hearing me. Any questions, or, I don't know how this works. Do I curtsy?
Oh, yeah, just hang out there for a second.
All right.
A few questions for you, Mr. Richards.
Sure.
Um, hmm, the one, you know what? No, I don't. We haven't said anything yet, so. But I'll wait till the end for Mr. Hardisty to speak, but so I can ask you questions and the others, I'll go ahead and let, ask Mr. Hardisty to speak. So you can stand or sit down if you want to while he.
I've been sitting all evening.
Okay, sweetie.
I'll stand.
We all have. Thank you very much for coming here today. This has, I just want to reiterate, this has absolutely nothing to do with you or your job performance. And, and that would go the same for everyone in here, and we're going to hear from four more, one more later after that. But the only thing that I would like to share with you all and the board, as you mentioned, you were told that this probably wouldn't be here, and that's because I think you all probably, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but it was hired with COVID money, that we, the influx of money that we discussed earlier that comes in, came in to the county. And, and quite honestly, there were a lot of jobs that were created during that time, and these are some of those positions. As he said prior to this, it was an extracurricular job by two teachers in the building. My understanding, I think middle schools had two sysops prior to the creation of these positions. And so the only thing I really have to even add from what he said, he does do a lot of things. Ms. Grass caught me Sunday morning at church about you, so I just want you to know she's advocating for you as well every time that somebody will listen. And she's an amazing lady, so I don't hold that against her. I think it's great. But the, the issue that we have at the end of the day is that we have more positions than we can afford. And these five positions in total represent $459,400. And so we've heard from a lot of employees today, we're going to hear from a few more before we're finished, and there's a consistent theme. Everyone loves what they do. They do it very well, and, and we're very fortunate to have them all. I, I can attest to that, because I've seen them in action. They're very good at what they do. The unfortunate part is for the board, and the difficult job for me to even present something like this to you, is at the end of the day, we cannot continue down a road where we can't pay our bills. And what I don't want the board to end up doing, and, and listen, I, at some point in their future, I'll be retiring. And that's just how life works, and that'll happen. The board votes not to take any of these recommendations, and we'll figure out a way next year. But every dollar that we use out of the, the savings, and as long as you live off of savings to pay bills and pay employees, in two to five years, you die by those. And there will come a time in the very near future where the board will have to make a decision, do we pay bills, or do we send the football team to the championship? Because you can't do both when you're out of money. And, and I hate for it to be that simple, but at the end of the day, we are running a deficit, and this is a position that was, these positions were funded with COVID dollars, and they were kept, and you all do amazing work. There's, there's no doubt. You all, and as you said, you do a lot of things that you were never even hired to do, and I'm sure that's going to be a consistent theme from all four that get up and speak, just amazing things. But the reason they're on here is solely because they're positions that there may be another path forward without employing all five, or go back to sysop program, because we also have technology people troubleshooting within the county as well, that are service employees that are here from the district office, a completely different role, and I, I acknowledge that, because you all serve a completely different role within the building. I just want you to appreciate what you've done.
Sure, thank you.
Mr. Richards?
Yes.
Sorry, now I can ask you.
Now you have to ask me questions?
Yes. Do the evidence presented by the administration so, sufficient and non-frevelous reason for the recommended actions?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to respond to the administration's recommendation?
I believe so, yes.
Were you given the opportunity to ask any relevant questions?
I'm sorry?
Were you given the opportunity to ask any relevant questions?
Yes.
And were you given appropriate notice and hearing procedures followed by the statute?
Yes.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Richard Black, and he's a TSTS at Huntington Middle School.
My name is Rick Black. Been in the county for 20 years now, I believe. Been around a long time. I'm going to keep it short and sweet, because we've been here for a long time. I understand the financial situation we're in completely. I don't think anybody has anything personal against anyone. I just think that we're going to create a disservice to the students. As of this afternoon, I have had 1,024 support tickets this year. That means I'm getting somewhere about six and a half, 6.25 tickets per day. And most days, it's constant. And if I don't have an influx in a day, I'm finding a professional development that I can do online so that I stay ahead of where I'm at in my job. I pride myself on having a less than one hour turnaround time on a kid's device, because that kid needs the device so that they can learn in that classroom. It's what I do. There's all the other stuff that I do that really isn't on, probably on the job description that I've been asked to do, but it's because that's where my strength's at, and my administrators, and my teachers, and the kids ask me to do that. I'm not going to list all of that. I understand the situation. I just think we need to reconsider, because I think we're doing a disservice to the teachers, to the administrators, and the students.
Thank you.
You heard the rationale for Mr. Hardisty?
Uh huh.
And did the rationale show sufficient non-frevelous reason for the recommended action?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to respond to the recommendation?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to ask relevant questions?
Yes.
Were you given appropriate notice and hearing procedures followed by the statute?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Black.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have Ms. Backus. Ms. Backus is a TSTS at Barbersville Middle School.
I printed it out before I left, but I left it on my desk. Hi, my name's Felicia Backus. I'm the technology specialist at Barbersville Middle School. And I want to preface this by saying, whenever I first heard that this was happening, I was a little bit ambivalent about it. I had a point where I could maybe do a career change or not, or maybe it was time to do something else. But whenever I started, I thought, maybe I'll work from home. Started looking around online and found some teaching jobs from home, virtual teaching. And I thought, oh, this is interesting. I could, West Virginia Virtual Academy. Did a little bit more research, found out that the CEO of the company that runs the West Virginia Virtual Academy made over $15 million last year. And they pride themselves on the fact that they've only spent about $2,000 and some dollars. on the fact that they've only spent about $2,000 and some dollars of the $7,800 that they get from our state per student. That's why they're so, so I'm mad. I'm, and not you all, obviously, but I'm, I'm, I'm about as radicalized as I've ever been, and I'm not that person that cares usually about how much money people make, but that's just wrong because it's taken away from our kids. So I'm mad. That's the reason why this became more than one paragraph and why I'm even here. So, the way I understand it, there's no reason, or there's no question about our ability to do this job or, or what we do. I understand that this is based on budget constraints, but there's another way to save money, another way to help the bottom line, we can be more efficient. They've already said that word a few times. You're going to hear me say it a lot. I'm kind of obsessed with efficiency. So, we've developed systems and procedures that help save time for everyone, especially our classroom teachers. If anything, in this time of belt tightening, we should be working to help more buildings do more things more efficiently, not decreasing support, and in some cases, eliminating the people that make things more efficient. Keep in mind, I'm a teacher, I work in the building that I taught in, that I also went to school in, that my kids went to school in. I know my staff, I know my students, I, I can't overstate the importance of that, the relationships that we have. Two of the major concerns that we're facing right now is just shrinking, well, I'll just go over the one, you know it's hard to find teachers, you all know that. But the other one is our enrollment shrinking, and we're, we're losing students. So, but by reducing our positions, we're taking one of our greatest resources, and we're making it less stable and less reliable. No homeschool student that I know of has access to the resources that we provide in Cabo County. On day one, we hand our students an iPad. No pub, no private school in the area does that that I know of. So these devices, and whenever I'm talking about resources, I'm talking about all the other things that we have, it's not just the iPad we place in their hand, it's the, the things that we're allowing them to make. We just made a major investment in our building through grant money with laser cutters and printers and, and things that these kids are being able to create. We've got robots and robotic, these are things that we bought, and this is a resource, this is a thing that makes us special, this is things that we can provide that nobody else around here is providing, and obviously, no homeschool's getting it. So, but also, we hand our students a device on day one. These devices, they help us communicate with the new ESL student, English as a second language student, that enrolled yesterday but does not speak any English. It happens all the time. These devices help us meet required IP accommodations, and by reducing the embedded technology specialist, that's us, we're turning our backs on one of the biggest advantages that we have over private schools and homeschooling, and that's our technology that we've already put the money into. Technology allows us to communicate with parents in real time with Schoology. They get a dashboard, they can see what's going on. I, we, we give trainings to our parents. I've sat down with plenty of grandma and an uncle and showed them how to get signed in and showed them, and usually I call the student in too and say, "Sit down here and show me these things that you, your grandma says you can't tell her what the answers are. You know how to get around in Schoology." So we talk about it, and it is, it's usually, it's usually grandma or grandpa or uncle or whoever who's helping raise the student that needs to know it. We give, beginning of the year, we give workshops for parents, but also sit down one-on-one with them. So, they can meet more conveniently because of teams, that we have a lot of parents who attend IEP meetings virtually. None of this happens if the device isn't deployed properly, if their student account isn't created properly, if Schoology and Clever don't sync properly, those are all things we have a part in, and nobody notices it until it doesn't work. I've tried not to make too big of a deal about this on our community, but every parent that I have talked to or who's found out that my job was being reduced, the first thing they ask me about is, "What about that levy that we just passed?" That levy was supposed to pay for these extra things for our students, this was supposed to pay for extra things, and I, I've never once told anybody that my job was funded by the levy, I don't know what it's funded by, I get paycheck, that's all I care about. But I'm just telling you that the parents, especially the ones that have students in middle schools, they know who we are, they know that they can send us an email and get a response, they know that, you know, "You better not do that, or Ms. Backus is going to find out." They do, they use me as a threat. County's made a huge investment in technology over the past few years. Recently, we've made the wisest decision to start moving our high school students to more efficient and less expensive iPads. I like that idea, I've been all for that idea, but guess who the iPad experts are? That's us, we're the iPad experts. Making this investment and then subsequent and cutting the technology specialist is kind of like buying a new fleet of buses and then firing the mechanics. And then you say, "Oh, don't worry, if something breaks, the bus drivers will fix it, it'll be fine." Or it may take a day or two longer to get that bus fixed, but the students on that run will just find a different way to get to school for those days. We wouldn't do that. So, obviously, if, if the job's split up and you're sharing a technology specialist, it's going to take a little bit longer for some of these things to be addressed. I'm here to tell you that turning teachers into their own frontline technology specialists, or technology people, and leaving them alone in a classroom stranded without any help, we already put too much on them. This is another thing that they don't know, they're subject, they're subject matter experts, they're behavioral specialists, they're counselors, social workers, and now we want them to do their own tech support? If we want our student outcomes to improve, we need to be placing less non-teaching responsibilities on teachers. I don't know if you've ever been in a classroom as a teacher, when you've planned a lesson and you're incorporating something, a new digital resource, and you're excited about it, and then that technology fails in front of the students and everybody. I have, it was seven years ago, it was OneNote, and I've never tried to use it again. It's very, very frustrating as a teacher. Unreliable technology, it, it makes people stop using it, and this is where the kids are getting all of their information, this is their textbook, this is where they're taking their tests. So, our buildings have Maker Spaces that we provide students with high-tech, hands-on, creative possibilities. They have student news teams, student tech teams, robotics clubs, they're all supported by us. Our teachers are integrated, integrating virtual reality, robotics, and AI in the classroom, we support all of that. We get in there and figure out how to make it work. Believe it or not, you don't just open up a box of those little Spiro robots, I don't know if you've seen them, that, you don't just open those up and hand them to students and say, "Get to it." You've got to figure out how to use it yourself, and then you've got to figure out how to incorporate it into your actual standards and into classroom instruction. Every new curriculum adoption has its own platform that requires integration into our network. Our teachers have access to countless digital resources to help them design and create amazing lessons. I'm certified in three of the four subjects, core subjects, and I speak English, that, that tells you what the other three are, right? Okay, math, science, and social studies. So I understand the curriculum, and I also am pretty handy at helping teachers figure out which standards they're working towards and helping them craft some lessons. Virtual science labs are fantastic, they're great, but if you can't post them in Schoology or import the grades into the gradebook properly, they just add extra steps and frustration for teachers and students. All of our testing takes place on these devices. All the iReady, the benchmarks, all of the, everything through West Virginia GSA, through Cambium's platform, takes place on the iPads. Guess what, we're starting GSA testing tomorrow morning at Barbersville. I will have students there at 7:30 in the morning who forgot their iPad, and I'll have to deploy a certain number of iPads to them. So, next year, if this job is split, I think we can all say that our busiest time is probably between 7:30 and 8:30 in the morning. Are we going to have the schools test on a different schedule? You can't, if you're split between two middle schools, you can't be at both of them every morning. And I've rescheduled doctor's appointments because of testing, and I know everybody else here does too. It's important, and we, we take that kind of responsibility, it's very important. So, if we do our job well, you never know what we're doing. We're the eyes and ears on the ground, we're the reason the front office phone still gets answered when the Wi-Fi network goes down, we're the reason a bullying situation was mediated because we had camera footage, we're the reason the bell rings when it's supposed to, we're the reason you can get in the building when you need to, and we're the reason that our families feel engaged and that they're communicating with the schools. Last year, we went to, I'm not even going to go into the device refresh, all right? It's late, I'm tired. We did it. We created the system, it was amazing. We kept, we had the information rather than making teachers write 25 12-digit serial numbers down for each student, we provided them with that information. That 100% was crafted by us all the way around, wiping them, everything, just as somebody, it was amazing. We did great. We struggle with information silos in this county, each school, sometimes we struggle with getting information back and forth, but we share information all day long. We quickly identify issues and share solutions. I would wager to say that we communicate more efficiently than any other department in the district. We have weekly scheduled meetings, and we also communicate constantly via Teams. Keep in mind, our technology department, by all accounts, did not properly scale up when this county went one-to-one. Yes, we had two middle school sysops, we were not one-to-one then. Whenever I say extracurricular sysop, that's, so that's a teacher that is teaching their regular schedule, but they're doing this technology stuff on the side when they can. Sounds like the worst job in the world, there's no way I would do it, there's, there's no, I would drive myself crazy. But, so, we did not scale up, so now if we're going to split that in half, I'm sorry, the techs can't do what we do, we're teachers. So you have technology address, my friend who's an elementary teacher told me this. The extracurricular sysop model is not viable, it's a bare minimum level, the elementary schools that have sysops that are teachers, they're teaching their own classes. Technology issues may not be addressed for days, leaving teachers and students unable to successfully access technology and/or programs that are required, required by the county. I step in often to assist with my feeder schools, which, by the way, one of the largest elementary schools in the, the largest elementary school in the county is one of my feeder schools. Being a one-to-one district K-12 requires technology support staff to ensure successful use. So, not on, down in my school, I'm trying to go fast, guys, I'm sorry. At BMS, we have almost 20% more students than the next largest middle school. We also have one less administrator, no community and schools resource, and no extra resources because we're not Title I. Population matters, and the number of devices matter. Our students are just as deserving as everyone else. While we currently have 680 students, that's, the number's a little bit old, but not too old, 680-ish students enrolled, over the course of the school year, we've seen 750 students. So that's 750 devices deployed, 750 account credentials, 750 assets to manage when a student loses their device or moves out of the district. There's no wiggle room in our schedule, there's nobody extra in our building to help with these things. We have admin, counselors, and that's it. So, I'll skip over all the other cool things I've done. So, okay, I do, I have less support requests than the other middle schools in the county, and part of this is because of who I am as a person. I'm obsessed with efficiency, so whenever I do see the student in the hallway or they come into my office with a problem, I tend to go ahead and fix it, especially if I can at the moment, and because it just seems more efficient, and so, it does, it looks like I have a lot less support requests. But, I responded to two teacher emails and two Schoology messages from students since we've been here tonight. So, I'm accessible, I'm, I'm, I'm fixing problems all day long. I know, because I'm in the building, I, I know that I can pull a seventh grade student in to address their device health, and I know that the best time to do that is second or third period because that's their related arts. Nothing against related arts, but I'm not going to pull them out of math class to fix a problem that I could fix other times. I can do that because I'm in the building. If I was visiting the building or in, only in the building part-time, more kids are going to be pulled out of class. I'm especially proud of the Maker Space. Over the past couple of years, we've cobbled together some grants along with Project Lead the Way and our VoAG to, we've got a Maker Space, I'm super proud of it, the kids are using their PBIS tickets that they earn to buy time in the Maker Space, and we've got a, we've got a laser engraver and cutter and some vinyl cutting going on, and UV acrylic and all kinds of stuff, and what's really cool about it is most of what's happening right now is the students are using the tickets that they earn to buy, to make things for gifts for Mother's Day or for friends or for family, and I just think that's really cool. So, we've made this investment through this grant money that we've cobbled together over the past few years. If I'm not there, if there's not somebody there full-time, the stuff's just going to sit, it's, it's not going to be used, and that's, that's a real shame. So, so from everything I hear, we're in tough times financially, and we're facing the potential of even tougher times down the road. We're the people who make it possible to do more with less. We streamline, automate, coagulate, coordinate, just about anything that comes our way. If anything, we need to widen the areas that we support and formalize our relationships with our feeder schools. I already kind of sneak and help mine probably more than I should. I truly hope that you'll reconsider reducing these positions because you may not always notice our presence, but I guarantee that everybody's going to notice our absence. That's it.
Thank you. I think Ms. Hornback, over Myers, has a few questions.
Yes, Ms. Backus, you heard Mr. Hardisty's explanation for the proposed recommendations this evening?
You mean as far as this job?
Yes.
About the two years with the COVID money? And I, yes, I did hear that. I know that it was originally, when we were originally hired, we heard that it was maybe for a year, maybe two. After that occurred, it was pretty much felt across us, I, I'm not going to say said out loud, but that this was going to be something that, hey, you guys are sticking, you know, this is, this is obviously a program that we need, so, but yes, I mean, I understand that whenever the position was first created, it was a year or two.
Do you want to say something?
I just wanted to follow up again, this, and I think I've made it clear, this isn't about anyone's job performance or anything. I do want to clarify just a couple of things that you had mentioned and that we've heard earlier about the investment we've made in technology. The public probably doesn't know this because not everything is, is shown, or shouldn't say shown, not everything's really followed that happens in a board meeting because it's not important to the public until it's important to the public. But one of the things that the board has done in the past is, we're still paying for the technology, to the tune, we started out the year with about $1.7 million payment to Apple for the products that we currently have, and that's not counting the new devices, and I'm glad you agree for next year with the iPads, because one, the other thing I would encourage everyone to do is, the first Monday in May, first Monday in May, we will have a budget here, a meeting, where we talk about the budget coming up, and, and I've heard trim excess waste to other places. I think that'll be clear that I don't advocate for wasting money anywhere. We've looked at textbooks, we've nearly cut out central office travel, we've cut a lot, a lot of money out of only next year's budget, but the current year's budget is trying to offset some of the issues that we have. So I just wanted to point that out. Thank you.
Thank you.
The question was going to be, did you receive a sufficient and non-frivolous reason for the recommendation?
Yes.
Okay. Were you given the opportunity to respond to the recommendation?
I was.
Were you given the opportunity to ask relevant questions?
Yes.
And did you receive appropriate notice and hearing procedures followed by the statute?
Beautifully.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay. Next, we have Kristy Schaefer. Ms. Schaefer is a TSTs at Huntington East Middle School.
All right, so I emailed everyone earlier today, and some of you may have had a chance to read it, some of you may not, and I understand that. I'm going to read the email that I sent to you, and then I'm going to go back and pinpoint some of the things that I have heard that I think need to be addressed from my colleagues, okay? I do have copies of the email and the attachments that I sent that can be passed out to everyone, okay? So, I have a sampling of letters from educational professionals concerning the elimination of a dedicated technology support and training specialist, or a TSTs, in each of the middle schools. I would like to take a few minutes for everyone to review the concerns of the Huntington East Middle School staff. So these are in particular from employees who have either been at Huntington East Middle School, are currently employed at Huntington East Middle School, or have substituted at Huntington East Middle School. So it's all from my school. I have been with the county for, this is my 15th year, I believe, and I have spent a decade of that at Huntington East Middle School, so I feel very... decade of that at Huntington East Middle School, so I feel very in tune with what they need. I do want to point out that prior to going to Huntington East, I was a business education teacher at Cabo Midland High School, and prior to that, I ran a bank for seven years. So I understand finance. I got you. I understand what you're trying to do. I just think that the cost-saving measure that you're trying to do with this cut is going to cost you more in the long run than keeping the positions. So, that's the background starting for me. The concerns that are in those letters, I believe, are concerns throughout the county. I have spoken to other employees at other schools, I have spoken to other parents, and everyone seems to mimic those same things. I did not load you down with 100 different letters, though. I understand and appreciate the need to cut expenses and create a livable budget for the county. However, having, trying to have two TSTSs cover the entire county is going to cost much more in terms of the productivity of our staff and our students than can be measured in dollars. In addition to the downtime experienced while waiting for a TSTS to be free to address their situation, we will experience a larger shrinkage in devices. TSs play a large role in making sure that the inventory that we have is managed well and devices are returned when students exit the county. What we do in preventative work is unmeasurable. So you've seen probably the pyramid that's out there, and it's IT at the top, and you see this little sliver at the top, and then all, you've got the water level, and then all underneath the iceberg is all the things you don't see. That's what we are. We're all the things that you don't see. So you are seeing dollars on a spreadsheet, but you are not seeing all the dollars that we save in terms of devices, in terms of instructional time that is not lost, in terms of education, furthering with the professionals in our building. So to give you an idea of the workload that I've experienced over the past four years as Huntington East Middle School's TS, and we were told at the time that we took this position, that it was with grant money from COVID, and that there was possibility that it would not be continued. So we were also told at that time that we may at one time have to advocate for our positions. So I am, I'm a record taker. I'm a banker by heart, by first, so like, I keep records. So I, at that time, started a record of any time that I worked on a support request or a work order, and any time that I answered an email related to my position. So those totals you have before you, as of April 17th, I have resolved 3,583 work orders. That means that there's been some kind of technical problem in my building almost 3,600 times. Okay? And then in relation to emails that I have addressed, because not everybody submits a work order, sometimes they will just send you an email and ask you a question. I have answered 14,470 emails in the past four years. Okay? That's not counting all of the people who have stopped me in the hallway and asked me a quick question. That's my favorite phrase, can I ask you a quick question? There's lots of quick questions. And the impact that the TSs make in the building in allowing your staff to function efficiently, it can't be measured. And when we heard that this position was being cut, and that news was shared with other staff members, I have teachers who are in, you know, actual fear of what they're going to do. What am I going to do if I don't have you to ask when something happens? What am I going to do when this happens? What am I going to do? They're, they know what we do. They see what we do, and they're going to feel our absence tremendously. So those iPads that you're making payments on still, they're not going to use them. They're going to go back to paper and pencil, and they're going to run those copiers all night long. Because if they don't have someone who can quickly fix the items that we have given them and the tools that we've given them, they're not going to use them. There are going to be paperweights on a desk, and you're going to be making payments on items that are not used or used by a select few. Because I still have teachers that I am trying to get to use it in the classroom in the appropriate way. Because I have some older teachers in my building, and there are some that are resistant to change. And we have to take baby steps, a little bit more every time, a little bit more every time, or we try this on it, and then we try that. But if there's not someone there to constantly be encouraging that use, it's not going to happen, guys. I'm sorry to tell you, but it's not. There's going to be more teachers who set them aside and say it's quicker to just run off a copy, or I'll just do this instead. You're going to lose money. You're going to be paying for an asset that's not used, like those consumable textbooks that the gentleman was talking about earlier, that's sitting in a stack that nobody touches. That's what these iPads are going to be. And I think that's a waste, because they are a wonderful resource in the hands of the students when used properly, a wonderful resource. And with the numbers that you have, that I just gave you, I only have eight hours in a workday. I'm a hard worker, but I can't answer the work level of multiple schools at the level that they are accustomed to. And I don't think any of my colleagues can either. And I was an extracurricular sysop when we had extracurricular sysops in the middle school, and I will tell you that that is one of the hardest jobs that I have ever done, because the need is so great for somebody to help on certain things, and you don't have the time. So you're either giving up your planning period, or you are staying late after school, and I'm not talking you're staying a half an hour late. There'd be nights that I stayed there two or three hours after school closed to get that done. And it's just going to be worse with these devices, because you're going to need the students or the teachers to have conversations about what's wrong sometimes, because sometimes we get work orders and there's not a lot of details on them. It's like, oh, this isn't working. Okay, that's great. Tell me how. If I'm there after school and that teacher's not there, there's nobody here to tell me how. And I just don't see how it can work. I've been, I was a business education teacher in the classroom when we had desktops, and all we had was the texts from the service personnel to come and work. And I know that when I had to put in a request for them to come, it would be four or five days sometimes before they could come to me. And just thankfully, I had a lab most of the time that I, you know, could move a child to a different device and be able to do it. And you won't be able to do that now. There's not going to be an alternative for that student. So that student is going to be left with downtime, or they're going to have to be given an alternate assignment, which creates additional work for your teachers, which makes your teachers even less inclined to integrate technology if, when it doesn't work, nobody can fix it quickly. And while I respect our service personnel greatly, and I respect our texts tremendously, they are not the same as a TS. And they're not the same because they're not teachers. The teachers know the software that the other teachers are using. We know why the ins and outs don't work when you try and integrate the software. The texts are really great at fixing things and making them turn on. Once they're on and they're out there, that's the end of their job, most of the times. They get things to work, they're power on, they connect to what they're supposed to, you know, you hit the internet, and then once you're in there, they don't use those systems. And it's not their fault that they don't know, but they haven't used them, they haven't taught with them. They don't have the training on them. You can't expect them to fix something that they don't know anything about. It's very short-sighted. You're going to have a lot of things that are going to go unused. To go back to my letter, "We are a society that relies on technology for so much of our daily life that when the technology information flow is disrupted, it becomes extremely difficult to complete our jobs in an efficient manner. One-to-one technology is the trend of the workforce today and going forward." The Board of Education saw the importance of this, and we initiated the one-to-one in the county. You all know it. You voted on it. You believe it. And I have been to conferences around the state, and we are far ahead of most of the counties in the state. And that's a point of pride. We need to support what we started, though. And if you cut the people who support that technology, you're taking a step backward. You're not moving forward. You're taking our kids back a step, because they have to have the support to use the tools that you gave them. In my last paragraph, I say that there are other options that maybe we could have considered, revising contract days, you know, other job responsibilities, things that we would, you know, discuss. But I don't think this is the cost-saving measure that you want, guys. I really don't. I think in the long run, it's going to cost you a lot in terms of productivity, it's going to cost you a lot in terms of lost devices, it's going to cost you a lot of time in just lost assets. And people are going to put the devices aside when they're not supported, and they're not going to be used, which is a shame. And like I said, I've been here, this is year 15 for me, I have a job somewhere, it's not necessarily that, but I have been in technology in this county for, you know, 15 years now. This is not the move you want to make.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schaefer. Did you hear the explanation Mr. Hardisty gave after Mr. Richards?
I did.
Do you, they show sufficient and non-frivolous reasons for recommending the action?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to respond to the administration's recommendation?
Yes.
Were you given the opportunity to ask questions?
Yes.
And did you, did you receive the appropriate notice and hearing procedures followed by statute?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
The final hearing is Mr. Mike McCormick. Mr. McCormick is a TSTS at the Cabo County Career Technology Center, and I believe Mr. McCormick wanted to close hearing, is that correct, Ms. Martin? Okay. And he's represented by Ms. Katrina Martin.
Okay. We just need a motion for executive session. We have a motion to go into executive session by Ms. Smalley, seconded by Mr. Abess, to go into executive session to discuss personnel matter. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? All right, executive session. Need a motion to return to open session?
I make a motion, return into, return to open session.
Second.
Okay. We have the motion and the second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. We're back in open session. We are on our agenda at Section 3.2. Ms. Hardisty, did you want to say something before we move on?
I would appreciate the opportunity, President Polly. I just want to say to those that are still hanging out here with us, thank you very much. I just wanted to say to our employees that came this evening for a hearing, thank you for your professionalism. Thank you for what you do for our kids every day. As we walk out of here, however, the board members vote, we're still all on the same team. We're still going to be pulling in the same direction. And if there's anything that I can do, regardless of how the vote goes tomorrow, please call me. And I know all of you all will be there in the morning with me. So I thank you again for what you do, Mr. Tenney. Ms. Martin, thank you all for being here as representatives, and for your professionalism. I truly appreciate that. Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir. All right. And Section 3.2 is our professional personnel section, and we're just going to go through these, an item at a time. So we'll start with 5178P, Teacher Realignment, Professional Personnel. Superintendent recommends the mutually agreed reassignment of the following elementary teachers for the 25-26 school year. And I would just need a motion for approval of that section.
I'll move to approve.
I'll second.
We have the motion from Mr. Abess, seconded by Ms. Smalley, for 5178P. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Motion carries. 5179P, Termination of Contracted Days, Transfer Professional Personnel. Superintendent recommends to, one, terminate the contract of employees named below, effective June 30th, 2025, and, two, to place the employees on transfer for the 25-26 school year. And that's Section 5179P. I just need a motion.
I have a motion. I'd like to recommend, or motion, that we pass 5179P with the exception of John McMillan.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Ms. Smalley, seconded by Mr. Abess, on 5179P to approve that entire section with the exception of John McMillan. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. All right. We, that takes us to Page 4. 5180P, Transfer Administrator, Professional Personnel. Listed below are the names of professional personnel who are being recommended for transfer for the 25-26 school year. And those are Melissa Ash and Gregory Webb. You have a motion for 5180P. Hearing none. It is not approved. We'll move on to 5180P, Transfer Professional Personnel. Listed below are the names of professional personnel who are being recommended for transfer for the 25-26 school year. There are several in that Section 5181P that goes on Page 4, 5, 6, and 7. I would just need a motion for that. 5181P.
I move that we approve that 5181P.
Okay. We have a motion.
I'll second.
And we have a second. Mr. Abess seconded. Okay. All in favor of approval for 5181P signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
No.
We have 3 to 1. Motion carries. All right, 5182P.
I need to recuse myself from this.
Okay. Out the door. We just said the whole thing. I don't, I don't think it'll matter, but. Reduction in Force Professional Personnel. Superintendent recommends terminating contract of the employees named below, effective June 30th, 2025. Just need a motion for approval of 5182P.
I move that we approve 5182P.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none. Motion carries. We're on Page 9. 5183P, Renewal of Contracts Professional Personnel. Listed below are the names of professional employees who are being considered for renewal of contracts for the 25-26 school year. We have a motion for 5183P.
I move that we accept 5183P.
Second.
Here we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of approval signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None. The motion carries. 5184P on Page 11. Termination of Extracurricular Contract Professional Personnel. Superintendent recommends terminating the extracurricular contract of the employees named below, effective June 30th, 2025. We have a motion for 5184P.
So moved.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. The motion carries. And that takes us to Page 12, Section 3.3, Service Personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the Service Personnel section as presented?
I'll make a motion to approve that.
I second.
Okay. The motion is to approve Section 3.3, Service Personnel, as presented. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. Hearing none, the motion carries. And I believe that takes us over to toward the end of our agenda. We have no special board items. Closing items. Have any board member comments at this time? If not, we just need a motion for adjournment.
President Polly, I apologize for the interruption. I just wanted to make sure that the employees that might be impacted by the decision this evening evening, for those that were not approved, there's some ripple effects there, and so we'll work on those tomorrow, notify those employees as well that there's some impact to those. Thank you.
Thank you. We have a motion for adjournment?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? No. We are adjourned at 11:08 PM.